Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the town council and where possible livestreamed on YouTube. Please note that the recording device is sensitive and the livestream may be recorded by a third party. So do not say anything you do when recording. If necessary, I would direct all recording in the room and the livestream to be stopped, but generally not allowed to do now. So we will normally record everything except any items taken in closed session. Members of the public may also make their own recordings, but must follow our rules to do so, including stopping recording when required. While we do not accept anonymous speaking at the published forum, members of the public who wish to speak but do not want their name published must please be in the papers before sending requests. Thank you. My art and one potential apologies from the council members.
Chair of apologies from council, councillor Andre, councillor Cox, councillor Greenfield and councillor Page.
Art and turn then is declaration of interest and request for dispensations as any disposable junior interests, other restful interests or non-restful interests.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Item 8C on the agenda, grant application on the current chairman of the behaviour of showmanship.
Okay, so do you want dispensation to remain?
I'll sit down.
None others? Okay, item 3 is the minutes of the meetings of town council held on Tuesday 25th March. So my proposal, councillor Hammond, Sando, councillor Smith, all those in favour, please show. Art and four then is to note progress actually arising from the minutes not covered by this agenda. So the first one is C24117, which is S106 obligations to Haverhill.
Still haven't heard back from them although every time I speak to people in health, there seems to be an awful lot to work trying to work out whether the section of S106 money has gone for the section of S106 office at West Suffolk, so work continues. They're only going down to find the receipts, literally they're going down to the microstop.
Okay, C2566 is the CP forms in paper. C2520C toilet facilities at Haverhill Library. Councillor Mason?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I have included it in my report, just very briefly. Suffolk County Council came back to me and said that they don't have full funding to fund the toilets. But the S106 library's contribution from Persimmon, which is around £250,000, that is going to come alive at the 500 dwelling. They're currently at £455,000, so it's anticipated that that money will become live then. And I've got it from several sources that Suffolk County Council are happy to use that S106 money to make that happen. It's just a shame that we can't make it happen soon.
How much do you say was the...
I might be wrong. It sounds a bit... That's what I'm putting off on what I can remember, but that might be one figure.
It does sound a lot of money.
It does sound a lot of money, but then again, the library services wouldn't just be necessary just for Haverhill but for selling here. But even that sounds like a large amount of money. I'd have to check that. But that's the number that I've got floating around in my head, I might be wrong.
Councillor James?
Yeah, just wondering, have you been told when that 500th dwelling is supposed to be happening?
Okay, well the trend is of course on occupants taking up residence in the different housing units. But it was said to me that they thought they'd hit the 500 mark by end of Christmas.
Yeah, did they have any response to the point that has been raised a couple of times that it is their responsibility, the council, to be providing toilet facilities for a building that they're left on? Because I understand that they would rather give the S106 money, but they're talking about the rest of this year, the library's still not having toilets. And I don't see how they can avoid that responsibility.
I think it's a fair point. I made that point myself. There were lots of things in Agon County that we would like funding, but it tends to be put on the final revitalisation list. I don't find it acceptable. I did make that point, but there is a commitment to putting it in. It's just unfortunate it would have been off the way.
Well, it's £216 per dwelling, that is the library contribution. So for 500 toilets, it's £108,000. But it does concern me because we spend a lot of time looking at these S106s. And the whole purpose of this is, as it says here, is for vision or additional improved library facilities. Now, the library facilities to us include actually providing books and education and stuff, lots of toilets. Within the vicinity of the site to serve the occupants of the development. Well, we know it's not a library on the site anyway. It does worry me that County Council of Graham, this money, which was designed in 2015 to provide extra educational facilities for people of this town, not a certain toilet part of that. I would personally say if the county council have got a... Then they should be going out and looking for grants and things like this to try and fund this really hard. I can't see how it can be toilet facilities.
I'm happy to feel that I got a firm statement of intent that they would be intending to use the S106. But there were no... Let me finish with this, councillor Dan. But there were no other monies available from government.
No, I understand. Councillor Chief?
I'll be devil's advocate, councillor Burns, and suggest that if you built a library from scratch, whatever you spent on it, it would have to include some toilets. Pro rata, yeah?
I agree, but we've got a library.
Yes, and that's where your point is valued, I think. It's existing facility, it's substandard. And they have an obligation as the owner of the building, don't they? Let alone the occupier of the building.
Councillor Smith?
Yes, I agree with councillor Berd. The S106 money, I would have thought, would go towards improving the facilities and services for education and library facilities. For example, they could extend a mobile library to the area where they're building these houses and provide that service. That is really what I see S106 money is doing. To provide the facilities of toilets in a public building such as a library is essential. And in fact, from a health and safety perspective, it has to happen. So I would expect them to seek out some sort of funding to be able to do that. But their responsibility is to the users of the library and staff.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with councillor Burn and councillor Smith. It seems to me as though what county is saying is, rather than find another source to actually pay for this thing that we are responsible for, we're going to wait and use that money so it doesn't cost us anything. While I understand councillor Mason's point that apparently there is no money. There has to be some money somewhere and there are presumably grants available. And I think it's their responsibility to find that money rather than taking it out of the S106 which should be used for better things. So yeah, I second that completely. I don't think it's acceptable. I don't think it's acceptable to make them wait until next year to have any toilets. And I think that the county need to be doing something about it now.
Councillor Chief?
I'm not convinced that it's a health and safety requirement to have toilets being for the public in a public library. But then there might be a disability discrimination case. I mean, that would be a matter of someone bringing a case against the council. You're kind of leaving yourself open to prostitution, a private civil prosecution.
I think Councillor Mason's getting that bit of eye.
I mean, to be honest, nobody's saying anything that I haven't made representations at Suffolk County Council about... What I would say, the Burton Centre is not how it necessarily was designed to be. So for example, the St Nicholas Hospice does have toilets on the ground floor, but when the Haven Cafe shuts, there isn't any access to those toilets. So it's not that there aren't toilets on the ground floor. There are toilets, but they're upstairs and accessible toilets is what is missing. I cannot offer anything else other than what I've been told. Of course, it's perfectly within the council's remit. If you wanted to write a letter, then please do. And it would be councillor Philip Faircliff-Mutter, who is the portfolio holder for that area.
So the upstairs toilets are accessible to people, I'll use the word best words, members of the public. Are they open at all times?
Yes, I mean technically they're on the St Nicholas Hospice side, but there's nothing to prevent people. There's an agreement that St Nicholas Hospice are happy for people to use their toilets.
Yeah, I don't get it. Councillor Mason alluded to it, but of course, the library predates the Burton and St Nicholas Hospice for quite a few years. When was the toilet available to the library? It was the county council's decision to hand over that to St Nicholas Hospice. For one reason or another, I don't know why. Denying people of the library access to that as of when St Nicholas Hospice. But of course, the other thing you have to remember is, the library is open X number of hours equally, I believe. St Nicholas Hospice is probably open that number of hours anyway. Yes, I know when you talk about the cafe side of things, the actual hospice, like the shop and everything else. Which the shop, of course, wasn't there previously either. So I think some sort of agreement should come sorted out. And maybe not require any money to be spent other than somebody saying, you know, let's look at this sense of... Something to think about.
Just going back to you. I'm satisfied with the responses Suffolk County Council have given there. There is a commitment to the spending of some monies to make this happen. I would much rather have this sooner rather than later. But as I say, it's entirely a gift of the town council if you want to make your representations.
I would propose that we do.
But councillor Central would be right. The county council requesting... I want to say movement for toilets or something.
Quite open play there.
By respect of the issues.
Yeah, thank you. And that's secondly by councillor James, yeah? So if nobody else has anything to say, all those in favour? Against? Okay, so I think five then is reports from district county councillors on issues at Burton's table and the public board. Five A is these three reports, which I'm assuming we haven't... During this, we're hoping to pop in? It would be an idea to have an update on PC, okay? Have to go into the next meeting?
Even this fact, Mike?
Good action, thank you. Five B then is announcements reports. And then this is the last one, over.
That's the one. I would say once in words, yeah. This was an attempt to look at the previous year in blue. With the current, sorry, not year, but last 12 months. So it was the last 12 months to date is orange, yeah. A whole year before that is in blue, just for a point of comparison. And it hasn't, hadn't really improved year on year, had it, you know, as a quick glance. When restrictions being the highest priority in the system status plan sometime in November, so we won't count November, we'll count from December onwards. If we ignore the blue, that's just sort of bobbling along. It actually deteriorated the response. This is a C1 mean response time in minutes. Went up a little bit, but you know, fluctuates anyway, December, January, even though we were top of the bill. It then produced this massive improvement claimed at the meeting we attended at the beginning of March. Except that that graph is wrong, I see. They changed nine minutes and one second at the meeting, didn't they? Everyone heard that? And I go a look at the published figures, it's actually 10:22, so you know, it's well down, but not as well down as it said at the meeting. For some reason, it gives all the figures across the board have changed for that month slightly. And then I've just picked up the figures for March and it's back up in, gone back up high again. So if there is going to be an improvement, it's not reliable. And people's, you know, if you have a crisis in the wrong month, you're going to die, he said dramatically.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, thanks very much for getting the figures together again. I much appreciate it. So basically, it shows that nothing's changed, nothing. There's just that one outlier which for some reason, you know, was remarkably low. And we still haven't got to find why that happened. It just seems, you know, the statistics across there just look so remarkable that, you know, just can't work out. Especially in the month of February, which is, you know, quite a, you know, a large month for people to sort of be taken into our sort of reception. So, yeah, just got to keep on it and it's just a shame that, you know, we've thrown everything at this and we still don't seem to be getting it, unfortunately. Carry on.
We are meant to be having a meeting again sometime in May, I believe. Or did shift onto June, but we're only a month away from June, aren't we, a bit? So is it time to start harassing?
Probably is.
Thank you. Five C then is the county council reports. Thank you again. Councillor Mason for the informative report.
Just a few things I'd like to pull out. The one thing that I didn't put in the report is Suffolk libraries now obviously aren't running Suffolk libraries. And it's now a new name, which is Suffolk Community Libraries, which will become a common parlance as its replacement title. A couple of things that residents might come to you about, but I just want to highlight that I am trying to pursue it. The new bus stop, I spent four years trying to get installed on Greenfields Way, buses aren't stopping there. Apparently Stagecoach have a computerised system for updates with new bus stops. Well, it doesn't look like the updated version, so with bus driving. For me, if I'm a bus driver and I see somebody standing at a bus stop, going through there, I would expect probably they want to catch a bus. But they're not stopping and I'm chasing county who don't run the buses, clearly Stagecoach do. But it's a computer system thing where the drivers don't feel that they need to stop there because they haven't been taught to. Which seems absolutely crazy if you ask me. I would like to do a shout out for the community wardens. It's really frustrating sometimes when paths are sweeping up, paths are sweeping up roads following to West Suffolk. And for maintenance, the paths and roads follow them to Suffolk County Council. But when it falls between the cracks, sometimes jobs don't get done. If it doesn't meet high risk maintenance operational requirement, mostly not because of me, but because of priority, there are other priorities around the county. You know, then works like this don't take place. I think the community wardens can make a big impact on these issues that kind of fall between the cracks. As I say, neither West Suffolk nor Suffolk County Council were willing to address this. And I must say, they've not quite finished the job, but they've already made a vast improvement. So a big shout out and thank you to the community wardens for tackling that. I had a chat with Persimmon today and they again have said that they're on the course for an end of May finish. The cul-de-sac, which possibly was going to be a cause of a possible delay, a huge piece of concrete made off sunny. But it's all forgotten and seems to fit in perfectly well. And Persimmon had again said that the end of May, of course highways have to sign off a road. So it's not likely to be open at the end of May. It's probably likely going to be in June. I don't know how long it takes highways, I mean, to drive down the road and say, yeah, that's good enough, I don't know. And of course, I don't know anything about the opening ceremony for that. That's still not being discussed with me, but I'm hoping that they'll contact town council to find out some arrangements. And finally, I'd just like to thank councillor Davidson and councillor Brown, councillor Marks, local district councillor. And of course, we've got Jackie Petinsky with us today and another resident, Gemma Cullen, for supporting the Great British Spring claim. I know I can't do it with the support of well-intentioned people and I'd just like to thank you. 134 bags is not all of the waste that is around Haverhill. But I like to think at particular times, a good chunk of the waste that was around Haverhill. So thank you to those people who took part. Thank you.
Is that the essential term about cracks in the pavement? So with the pavements, you said that that form grew of cracks, I wonder if that was... But with the bus stop, I mean, I don't know if the actual bus stop sign hasn't been moved, has it? Or has it now? So it's actually, you know, where it says bus stop. Is that actually on the shelf or not? Last time I looked, it was...
There's a flag with nothing on it, which is blank.
So there's nothing actually to say that it is a bus stop?
But what I've heard from the officer dealing with transport, the bus networks, is that it is purely an update system on their computers. I mean, I'll ask about the flag, the flag button. Very strong, but without numbers on it.
From family passports, I know that they fertilise it. Some of it from what they're known as, and they stop it if they're not calibrating, so maybe that is possible.
I'll ask a question.
It's worthwhile remembering back to the one outside Middles, which they installed. The buses were not stopping there, but I think if I'm right, you just flagged up the Stagecoach and they fixed it.
Yeah, I think I've just contacted Stagecoach, you just say...
It's simple as that. You know, I used to call the Stagecoach all the time and they would just fix it.
Well, I've been told Stagecoach have been contacted. I am going to be chasing them again this week. Four years and we've finally got the bus stop. It's jarring to say that it's...
Thank you. Any other questions for councillor Mason? Councillor Raj, do you have anything to add?
Very many also. Councillor Mason's fairly concise reports have covered pretty much everything. It's been fairly far, county. I did have a drive round the highways engineered the week before last. And we picked up, one of these... Excuse me. We picked up that a lot of the signs need cleaning and they're overgrown. I'm hoping that's going to get done. He's promised me he's going to look at getting it done. But I suspect we'll get that old thing, the reinvesting season now, so we can't touch a tree, but we'll keep pushing it. Coming up today, there's a new developers' guide to infrastructure contributions in Suffolk. There's a public consultation. I forwarded that to Colin Ford to circulate to you. So you can all see that and get involved in that consultation. There's not really a lot else going on. Just to pick up a little bit about libraries and county picking up the new service. They are going to reinvest in new mobile libraries because there was some concern that they were all long in the tooth and perhaps won't ever get replaced. But there's an undertaking that they are similar undertaking that all the computer systems in all the libraries are going to be picked up and replaced. So there is money going into it. I think that's about it. I'll continue over Tuesday to send out the road reports that come out. Any questions?
I just wanted to know, I noticed, and I just pulled up one of the public house outside the paving area, it's just completely collapsed. It's maybe two foot deep. It's just caved away. Right outside the boards, I just come around, you know, I just noticed it. But I think they were doing some work last week. On a telephone line up the alleyway to go into the public house, they were digging it up. Because CBO refused to work against their building. But I look, I think it's got something to do with that. But it's maybe seven foot, eight foot long, two foot deep, just gone, it's collapsed lately. Just noticed it's on the actual footpath, right outside the public house. And it fell down the brick.
That sounds serious, of course. Damage to, unless there's barriers around it, somebody could hurt themselves.
There's nothing around it at all.
So after this meeting, I'll make a telephone call.
Councillor Brown?
Thanks, Chair. Dave Ollie here. Been approached by residents after a while patch. It's about the bus stops around Rotherham Way. The signs, some of them are on lamp posts next to the grassed areas. And they're quite big expansive of grass. As said, in the winter, they struggle to get over the grass. Got to stand in the grass. I've seen people slip over in the grass. People can't get out of the bus if they're disabled or whatever. It's a, it's a real struggle other than getting onto the road. But I've had a look as you walk around, near to where the lamp posts are with the bus flags on. There's other lamp posts that are actually near to the path or drop. So some of them, if they could just move them, you know, around one or two, it would make people's lives a lot better, especially in the winter. It's not a big job, it's just a matter of two screws, I think, and then moving it around both feet.
Only was that simple?
Yeah, no, the actual physical work, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, councillor Raj. I remember in a conversation with our community locality officer, and he was saying that the marked bus stops, typically with the bus stops in the green, yellow paint, are Suffolk County Council. There's a requirement to update them. I have a similar issue with bus stops on the chimswell, which weren't installed by Suffolk County Council, but let's say another council. And there's not an obligation to do anything with those. And I suspect that the flags may just as well be an issue regarding who put them up. And it may well not have been Suffolk County Council that put them up in the first place.
So I think we'll have a conversation, we'll take it away and have a...
Yeah, this will come back. Yeah, they haven't got any markings on the road there at all, so it's just...
Five D then, district councillors.
Yeah, I've just looked on Suffolk news as chair of planning committee in Haverhill. The licensing, West Suffolk licensing committee, Suffolk committee, sorry, met and it's agreed, it said members agreed to impose a condition requiring a service for outside of the premises to be delivered only by waiters and waitresses and restrict the use of the outside area to 10pm. Other conditions in relation to the market square will be agreed between loungers and West Suffolk council and the landowner, which is... As, sorry, as the landowner, West Suffolk council.
And you're talking about the former arborsum?
That's former arborsum, yeah. Unfortunately councillor Cox couldn't attend, he's done well and that's why he's not attending today. He did give Vicki his apologies, so...
Thank you. Okay, we're done, so item 5, members of the public are welcome to make statements. Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, sorry, item 5, town councillors' master report. Thank you councillor Burns for sending your report again, is anything you'd like to add?
No, we've been putting button up today, we're going to be doing it tomorrow night and Wednesday night, hopefully finish Wednesday night if we can.
That is very good.
Yeah, if it falls down, don't blame me. Because the councillor has insisted I do the knots.
Oh, you're not, he wasn't a Boy Scout then?
I was a Seaman.
Yeah, he was a Boy Scout, but he's seen us.
Ah, yeah, seemed better, didn't it? Any questions?
No, so thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much. Right, this time it's definitely item 5, which is for members of the public who are welcome to make statements. What questions at this time? And then we've got members here from the Hayford show, so I don't think there's anything else to add, but if it's okay, the council will move directly to that item. Sitting here internally, listening to us. So if we can move to item 8 C, grant application, Hayford Show Committee are asking for two thousand pounds towards the staging of the Hayford show on the sixth of July, twenty twenty five.
So Chair, I'm going to sit down, but I've got my treasurer, Kelly Bennett, and other Hayford show members, Harry Saw and Jackie Bitinski, so I'd like to see my absence, thank you.
Mr Mayor, your intelligence.
Evening, and if you'd like to speak before we discuss the application. You don't have to, I'll put you on the spot, you might want to.
I hope that we've said everything in our application. The costs get greater each year, the number of volunteers, as everybody knows, it's difficult to fund. We are reaching out to local companies, but the cost of our insurance is expected to go up by about ten percent this year. The cost of renting the recreation grounds for the day, additional time for the toilets, all of them. And that's what you help us with and that's why it's so, so important to us. Because we can't put on the show without that support. We can, we can offer the attractions, we can, we can do all of the work and have all of the people, but the infrastructure has to be in place and we can't do it without you. So thank you for considering.
Thank you very much, I mean, we all appreciate the work you do, particularly from the Hayford show and town. Councillor Brown.
Yeah, the work you do is fantastic and the great thing is always that, yeah, any profits that you do, maybe do share, it's a good cause around the town, it's a, it's a great day to showcase different things are going in the town. Yeah, it's one of the premier events in the town and I'm more than happy to propose a £2,000 grant.
Central councillor Martin, anybody else who wants to speak on this item? We'll move straight to the votes. Yeah, okay, so the proposal from councillor Brown that we, we want the £2,000 second by councillor Martin. All those in favour for the show? Thank you very much for all that you do.
You're very welcome and it's a real pleasure to do, but thank you very much for all that you do, because we really, you know, with all the new people that are in town, it's really important to show them how good we are. There's lots of negativity in the world, so thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Welcome to say if you want it, so.
Would you mind if we? Sorry. And we'll see, would you like to sit?
Okay, item sixteen is the mayor's report, I can say that, I'm ready to go, should I answer any? Do you want to answer any questions?
I'm sure Mark Twain would be very impressed.
Well, yeah. There we go, right. For a line of that. Item seventeen is the application partnership, so I report from the clerk.
The board met last week. Yeah, apologies, I'm reporting apologies. But yeah, I thought it was a good meeting overall. It was, we're talking about the wellbeing hub in a few moments anyway, but that was a key thing. But there's, I think it was interesting how health is kind of a cross cutting theme through so much that goes on. Yet change at the local government, change in the NHS and the rest of it, is really unsettling. A lot of the public services have a moment, and I know wellbeing hub is kind of suffering a little bit from that. One of the outcomes was I was asked to talk to West Suffolk and County Council about taking part in a engagement process for the public to better understand local government reform. And I haven't reached out to the County Council yet, but the district council have already said yes, they're willing to take part in that. And it's not a debate, it's not which is the best version, it is answering the questions, because those questions will be pertinent to whoever designs the services for unitary, whether it's a single unitary or a unitary, or we'll have a single unitary, whether there's another unitary in Suffolk. It's neither here nor there, at the end of the day, there will be a unitary council. So whoever, whichever version that might be, they need to hear what people have, their concerns, before they set down and see how it will work. So that can help you very strongly, but probably going straight on to the wellbeing hub. The key issue here is trying to find the anchor tenants who can go into that to make it all work. Trying to get the finances to add up is proving tough. I think we hear around the table, everyone is very, very willing, but original sources of funding are not necessarily able to help anymore with that funding. So we haven't given up, but it's going to be an uphill struggle to make it work. I don't know whether councillor Jones wants to add anything to that.
Not really, I mean, that's somewhere that's. I, I think that the next step really is with the help of councillor Mason to approach county to find out how much. County, because obviously they have the statutory responsibility for public health and wellbeing. So, you know, we will hope that they will put in a fairly decent amount. But as councillor Mason has informed us, kind of over the time we've been talking about this, that there are obviously issues with money actually being available at county, so we really, I think, need to find out how much county can put into this, so that we know where we stand for balancing the books really, because once we know that, we'll be in the best position to then decide whether it's something that we can actually make work. And I am in the process of producing a document, which I will, when I've read it by the right people, I will send to you councillor Mason, if that's all right. So that you can share that with county and then we can get that process moving. Try and find out what we can get.
Lots of support, but lack of hands of office, I think that's the problem.
The only thing that I can possibly add about it is, it's not only just a challenge for county to find some money initially, but if there was an expectation that it was year on year, it's not a budget item that has been identified for that sort of regular commitment. So I think the funding is going to prove difficult, but we can only ask questions and they can only say no or even yes, so we'll have to wait.
I think the hope is that county would initially offer a larger amount in order, you know, to get this off the ground and then potentially put in a small amount as, you know, the town council and district council may do, so that all the partners are putting in just a very small amount yearly, you know, not masses, just to share. If there are gaps, which ideally the project will be self-funding, it'll be self-sufficient and we won't, we won't need that, but obviously we can't be sure of that because we can't be sure how many organisations are going to come in and actually be renting that space. We have a chicken and egg situation where it's very difficult, hard ask for commitment from these organisations when we don't yet have the space. We can't get the space unless we know we've got the money from these organisations, so it's a tricky situation. And I think knowing how much we'll get from county will help a long way with kind of sorting that out.
Councillor Brown.
Yeah, just to say hopefully he's just stumping rocks. Yeah, I feel sorry to everyone that's put so much hard work into this, there's such an air of optimism just a short time ago. Yeah, it's just getting back to section 106 again, and this is really stuff that could have, you know, really helped us. Yeah, and this partnership work, when it works, it's good. So, yeah, when it's, when you've got so many partners and one or two, you can't find them out, it really does cause issues, doesn't it? There's some that the town's really desperate for and, you know, and the people who work with us will just be, it's a shame if it doesn't come through. So, yeah, it does feed to everyone that's put, you know, the work in for this and hopefully the money can be found.
Section 106 was raised and.
Yeah, it was raised and so obviously, as you know, section 106 agreements vary. And so the library service perhaps could run a mobile library, we know the passage transport could run a bus service. Whatever the reason it is, the reason it is, the section 106 agreement for the NHS is capital spend only.
Yeah, that's wrong, that's wrong.
Yeah, I agree with you. Pretty different subjects, I'm one of the other things, I'm just going, I wasn't there. Some people thought I might not be in a round. Health Centre, I keep going, every meeting about press release for the Health Centre. What they've got in there and what they're planning to put in there. A number of people in this town just have no idea what services are available in this town.
Yeah, they're talking about doing a guided tour.
Well, it's like that, but the public need to know as well, and they were just going to, they kept saying, oh, we got away from here, press people to sort it out. It's been two years now since that happened.
Yeah, Sarah Hedges was talking about arranging a tour for people to see what's inside it, like the data, I think it'd be nice just to put showing the local media and, you know, social media and.
Obviously, I could have had to sort of, Sarah Hedges actually moving on, so.
Doesn't surprise me, that's what happens in health, so.
A lot of work into this project and other things in the town, so that I think Roderick will recognise the work that she has done.
Oh, no, it's just like, when they're just getting something moving and then they get moved on.
Yeah, of course, councillor.
Can I sort of propose or just ask that we maybe sort of, you know, write a little letter to Sarah saying thank you or something?
Can you propose that?
Propose that?
Yeah. No, I'll do it for you. That's Carrie, thank you. So item eight is the financial matters, item eight is authorized payments, as on your agenda, proposal by councillor Burns, second by councillor Stinchard, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you very much. Page?
No, this is just, this is not your money. You've actually already indicated your opinion on this, so this is just a formalising, what you said you would formalise. And we had everyone who responded said yes to this, so we just need a bounce to set.
Councillor James, second by councillor Hammond, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you very much. And we've done item C, so we'll move on there to nine, which is the adoption of committee reports. Final idea of sustainability work, party to move adoption, repeating the meeting held on the April 4th, required and then recommendations in secondary. Proposal by councillor Stinchard, accepted by councillor this week, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you. Planning committee to move adoption of the meetings held on the April 4th and 22nd of April 2025 and the end recommendations. Proposal by councillor Hammond, second by councillor Martin, all those in favour? Item ten is the policy improvement, do you view the following existing policy, pay is, pay is the updating spending orders?
Well, I think it's self expansion, what they've done, so you're all aware of the spending orders. And they are a model that is used across of the UK, the sort of England ways. And so this is, all we've done is just update ours to take into account the model changes. That's the same for the finance regulations as well. I can put them on the screen if there's anyone with any particular questions.
Have you said them two together? Yeah. So the proposals, answered by councillor Burns, set by councillor Martin, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
Hello, Manchester, taking on the dedicated councils, you said they're on.
Standards, yeah. Item twelve, date of next meeting, and that will be the annual meeting of the town council and the mayor, making sure it will take place on either twelve in the May of twenty twenty five, seven o'clock. We'll not be calling the committee to ourselves. And last, I can adjourn this closure.